I will be your, um, one of your speakers this evening. I will tell you that we are being livestreamed on the Friends of the Pumunki Regional Library Facebook page. And I'd like to thank Peggy Glavine for helping us with that. She also frequently livestreams library board meetings. So if you're interested in seeing a library board meeting, you can look at her Facebook page. Now, we are here in the great American tradition of town hall meetings. So I'd like us to start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. And if it's Dan, the flag is high up in the corner over there where it should be. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We surrender our public, which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I said, my name's Fran Freymer. I think I have this job tonight because for thirty-some years I was the director of the Pumunki Regional Library. I retired about fifteen years ago, assuming that I would enjoy my library for the rest of my life. But it's been threatened, so here I am. And I'm grateful to you all for being here with me today. We will have two other speakers tonight. Joy Washington, who is here, is a former school librarian. And she is the treasurer of the Friends of the Upper King William Library. She will be talking to you about Pumunki Regional Library, the budget pages of the Pumunki Regional Library. Library board members and administrative staff felt that they could not participate because of the contract negotiations going on. So we are using publicly available information from the library, and Joy will be talking about that. Our other speaker tonight is Nan Karmak, who's right here with me too. Nan is the director of the Library Development and Networking Division of the Library of Virginia. In her previous life, before she came to the Library of Virginia, Nan was the director of a successful county library. And she is here tonight to talk to us about the value of regional libraries and the law in the Virginia Code that sets up regional libraries and explains exactly how regions work and why they do. Have to put on my glasses to make sure I'm telling you everything. If you... This way? Okay. And if you can't hear me well, I can turn up the speaker. Turn it up? Turn it up, just a little. Thanks. I'm looking at my husband, who's pointing to his ear. He can't hear me very well. There are others in our audience tonight who may have information to share as we get into our question and answer session. And they are Mary Shipman, who is a former Pumunki Regional Library Board member. Mary, wave your hand to us. John Edwards, who was on the Pumunki Regional Library Board and is the town manager at West Point, back in that corner. Audrey Mitchell is a former library board member. Thanks, Audrey. And Mr. Bill Hodges, supervisor from District One. Thank you, Mr. Hodges, for being here. Is there anybody else I've forgotten who was on the library board? Okay. Well, um, we'll put up our agenda on the screen now. We plan to spend about an hour, an hour and a half together tonight. We, um, we have a program to give you information. But before we start now, I'd like us each to take a sort of quiet minute in our minds and focus on the purpose of the meeting tonight. We conceive this meeting as a town hall in which people can learn about and discuss the costs of providing public library service in King William County. And to try to understand why it is in the financial best interest and in the public service best interest of us all to save our robust library service by remaining part of the Pumunki Regional Library. I will pledge to you that all the information we're presenting tonight is publicly available. It's accurate and it's verifiable. We, um, we will be doing a question and answer session at the end of these presentations. So if you've got a piece of paper and a pencil, please make note of your questions as we go along, and then we'll take them all at once at the end. And we will answer them to the best of our ability, truthfully and honestly. And if you don't know the answer, we'll let you know that and try to get it for you later later. So I'd like to ask each of you to listen carefully. And I know that we will all treat each other with civility and kindness tonight. And having said that, I am going to start by talking about the background of this issue. Now, I'm not going to read these slides to you because I know that you can all read yourselves. And as of tomorrow morning, this slide presentation, as well as the handouts that you have, will be posted on the Save the King William Libraries website. And if you want your own personal copy, email to you. If you will give me or, yeah, me or Mary Shipman, who's back in the corner, your email address, we will be happy to email you a copy of that. So on the background, if you're here, you probably already know that on July 8th, the Board of Supervisors voted to withdraw from the Pumunki Regional Library without much, without any public discussion before that vote was taken. Their press release and conversations with citizens afterwards said that the cost of the Pumunki Regional Library was constantly growing and was unsustainable. We were promised a better library service at less cost to the taxpayer. But no cost analysis had been done and no plan to provide service after the withdrawal had been made. After significant citizen support for remaining in the library, the petition on the Save the King William Library website, which was set up in July, and that petition, by the way, had more than seven hundred and fifty citizens signees the last, um, the last time I lived. In September, the Board passed a resolution rescinding their withdrawal vote and instructed a new county administrator, Mrs. Davenport, to go into negotiations for a new contract for the Pumunki Regional Library with Hanover and Goochlin. That resolution placed a deadline of December 31st, that's the end of this month, for the successful completion of those negotiations. If the negotiations aren't completed that time, the resolution says that as of January 1st, the Board will inform the other two counties that they will, they intend to withdraw from the library effective January 2027. By law, unless given, um, sort of permission from the other two, a two-year withdrawal period is required. So at this point, we know that Mrs. Davenport has met at least twice with the other two county administrators, those of Hanover and Goochlin. But we do not know what the outcome of those meetings have been, nor do we know if, in fact, they've come up yet with a contract. So that means that next week, Monday, the ninth of December, is our last chance of finding out from the Board before December 31st, because it is their last meeting next week, what, if anything, they've decided about staying in the Pumunki Regional Library. Again, we don't know the concerns that the Board had about the existing contract. So we don't know if they've instructed Mrs. Davenport as to exactly what to negotiate with the Board. So we're at a loss there and can't answer the questions about that. But now we want to talk, I want to talk about the main issue that was identified by the Board is the reason for withdrawal, which are finances. Although the percentage of the county budget spent on the library has remained at a little less than 2% for the past decade, the Board first claimed the costs were rising and unsustainable. Then, of course, they promised better library service for less cost. We don't know what potential cost savings the Board believes an independent library might bring because no alternative budget has been presented to us. We don't know what resources and services the Board would provide or the new library would provide, nor do we know what services might be cut. The Board has committed to maintaining existing services at both the West Point and the Upper King William Library, not in writing, but in conversation. But we don't know if that means actually reduced hours costs that they have now or the regular 52 hours open a week that they had in the past. However, there are a few things about library finances that we do know, and Joy is going to talk to us about those. We know how much it costs to run the Pumunki Regional Library in King William. And so I'm going to turn it over to Joy to talk to you a bit about that.
All hear me okay? Yeah, it's very small. Again, this will be made available tomorrow. We can have it to you as early as tomorrow. So basically, this is just showing the expenditures and how the library is financed. And you'll see the King William, the fiscal year 2024 and 2025, the same amount was allocated for King William, which was the $602,907. And some discussion has been raised that some people have said, "Well, King William pays way more than, you know, we should," or that is an argument that some people have made, that we pay way too much for our small share of library services. But as you can see, Hanover, which has many more branches than we do, pays a vast majority of the funds. And so, and Goochlin also is comparable. In 2024, they were $593,803. And in fiscal year 2025, they were $634,480, which was actually more than King William put into the Pumunki Regional Library system. So, and I think as Fran said, that is about 2% of the King William County budget. So it's not a large amount. And, um, I know you guys can't see the numbers. I'm not going to read them all to you, because I don't think that's very effective. But again, you will be able to see them. You can have the presentation.
Just to be clear, Goochlin, you have one branch?
Yes, that is a very good point. King William and West Point are two branches, and Goochlin has one branch. So they paid almost as much as we did for their one branch in 2024, and they paid more than we did in 2025. Although I will say that 2025 amount does reflect the cut out. So even though we paid the same amount of money, we lost some, we had to lose hours because we didn't increase the budget. Next slide, please. I know these numbers are super, super small. But what I wanted to show was, if you break it down by the three counties that are served, and of course, King William was, is no longer in this, although they were a few years ago. So King William pays about 12% based on the population of the funding of the library. Goochlin pays about 16%, and Hanover pays about 72%. So again, we're a smaller county. We have a smaller percentage of population, but we also pay less. And Hanover, with their, they, ten branches now, um, they are paying more, obviously, than we are. And then over here, those numbers are super, super small. I have to move them off of my paper because I can't see them on there. Actually, I can't even see them on my paper. But it basically breaks down the amount of services that we get. So for our 12% and our $605,300 that we pay, 2% of our King William County budget. We have access to 765,103 books as part of a regional library. We have access to equipment such as laptops, hotspots, audio and visual things that you can check out, DVD's, CDs, subscription services, which are under... So another thing that a lot of people have said is that the, people don't use a library. That's what, that's what some people are saying. Well, nobody goes to the library. I go to the library all the time. But I also do make use of a lot of the services that I don't have to go to the library for. I download a lot of audiobooks and listen to them. I download ebooks and listen to them. But those things are not free. You still have to subscribe. You have to have either a, there's different ways of doing it, but those things cost money. So even if you want to make use of the services that are digital, that's not free. So those are all things that we have access to as well, as are shared services. And...
I'd like to make just one more comment about that. The library, Pumunki Regional Library budget is generally divided into two parts. One is shared services. And that is the part that we pay 12% on. And our cost in King William for shared services was $232,000. The, the rest of our 600 and some thousand dollars, the $370,000, paid for our two branches, the staff, the rent that we have to pay at Upper King William because we're in a non-county-owned building. So we are getting an incredible deal with the shared services part of this budget. Because for $232,000 in shared services, we get a huge collection every year, the access to and the use of, not only a huge collection of books, online resources, audiovisual resources, but we also get free access to every library in Hanover and Goochlin. Now, I know probably not many of us actually go to Goochlin a lot. I don't. But I certainly do go to Hanover a lot.
So is that $232,000 just for King William? Is it also $232,000 for West Point?
It's, we are, King William and, Upper King William and West Point are one.
Okay, so it's $232,000 for...
For the, for the King, for King William County. We have, the Pumunki Regional Library has always treated the two libraries equally. We, we are one county. West Point is us, and we are West Point. I, I hope I'm not overstating that. Certainly in terms of library service, that's always the way it's been. So yes, that is our share for that fiscal year, which I think is 2024, 25 fiscal year. And write, jot down your questions, and we'll take some more as we go on. And now I'm going to turn the mic over to Nan, who is going to talk about, from the statewide viewpoint, talk about regional libraries.
Thank you, Fran. And I want to applaud every single one of you for being here tonight. This is democracy in action, and I appreciate it. As Fran said, I've been in libraries for a long time now. And Fran was a very gracious mentor to me when I was a baby library director low many years ago. So I'm very happy to be here and talk to you a little bit about why regionalism became a thing. So back in the 60s, when the public library movement really got some steam, there was a lot of discussion about how do we make a public library that makes it be the best stewardship of taxpayer dollars and provides the best services? And that discussion was very economically driven. And you will know from all of our big box stores about things like economy of scale. You can buy supplies, materials, and all of those subscriptions Joy and Fran were talking about at a less expensive cost than each individual going out and buying their own. So economy of scale was a real driver when the state was developing codes surrounding regional libraries. It also avoids the duplication of effort. So for example, if King William were to withdraw and had and began their own library system, they would hire yet another library director. They would have to hire another librarian to catalog. These things are already being supplied to King William through the shared services. You would have to purchase that integrated library system. That's that software that zaps your books in and out and keeps on, keeps your track of you and your library activity and all of the inventory, if you will, if you want to keep that retail analogy going. So all of those would be duplicative. You already have excellent services through Pumunki. And to recreate that, simply going to cost more. It's also a larger pool of resources. Joy did a great job of talking about what you have access to now. And the one thing she didn't mention is staff knowledge. When you're in a regional library, you have a lot of staff members, so you can have lots of different kinds of expertise. Somebody might be great with law references. Somebody might be great with digital literacy. And so all of those people pulled together create a greater volume of knowledge. To separate from Pumunki, you would lose that depth of knowledge just because there aren't enough humans to provide all of those services. And certainly user access. That, you know, the stewardship part of the taxpayer dollar is huge, right? We all want our tax dollars to be spent the most efficiently. But it's also about, can everyone access library services? Many folks live in accounting, drive to Richmond for work or school, or whatever it is. So you might pass several Hanover libraries before you ever get back to West Point. What is the most convenient way for users to access those facilities? Certainly, that happens within the context of a Pumunki system. It's not to say that the King William County libraries, West Point and Upper King William, aren't accessible to you. But if you work a regular scheduled job, maybe you can't get there in the evenings. If you work on the weekends, maybe you can't get there on a Saturday. You know, so user access and economy, those are the two things that the state was really focused on when they were developing code surrounding regional libraries. Next slide, please. You're so fast. I looked away, I looked back, and there it is. So in the Virginia Code, these are the code sections that are relevant to this conversation. Virginia Code can be very good if you're having trouble sleeping. Get your tablet out, pull up the LIS system. But these are the code sections you'll want to look at. These are the ones that just sort of govern that. And it's not anything you don't already know. It basically says, "Okay, all these counties have to get together and agree on common terms." And it's usually done, about percent of population, of who pays what. And then who's going to be like the money person or the money county? Who's going to, who's going to run the money through? Because again, you don't want to duplicate your services and have more HR, more finance. Like, this is letting everybody get together to work together and save money. And then it gives the details about how a regional library board is structured and what the library board is empowered to do. It's all very boilerplate. You make the policy, you oversee the budget. Those are the two jobs of the library board. They're not involved in process or procedural or any other matter with staff. And then funds and expenses of regional library system. This is where the state sets expectation for remaining solvent, if you will, like any other good business should. Okay? That last one that I didn't highlight for some strange reason, this withdrawal from a regional library system, is where that two-year requirement is there. Because like any merger or separation, these things can't just happen overnight. Okay, now we're ready. Thank you. So this is where the rubber kind of hits the road for regional library systems and demonstrates the state's commitment to regional library systems for user access and economy of scale. We incentivize libraries to participate in regionalism. Literally incentivize it. You get more money from the state if you're a regional library. So for every 40% of every local dollar, so 40 cents on the dollar, expended by the political subdivision, that's part of the formula to get state aid. So that's the same for everybody, whether you're a county library or whether you are a regional library. But this is where things change. Per capita, if you're in a regional library system, you get 10 cents more per person in that locality, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it is an incentive. Libraries serving over 600,000, including regional, would only get 10 cents for that remaining population. So think of Fairfax, Loudoun County. We only have so much money. They get capped at a certain amount to keep that equity for all of our rural libraries as well. And then the square mileage incentive. You get an additional $20 per square mile for libraries serving more than one political jurisdiction. So that's double what an independent library would get from the state. So the state is so committed to regionalism, they are incentivizing this. And the General Assembly really likes libraries. We are at the highest level of state aid allocated by the Virginia General Assembly since 2001. We are 4% away from being at 100% funded, which is in, right? Fran just said, "Wow." I know, it's a dream, right? And, and I think that that commitment that the state is demonstrating and that the Virginia General Assembly is demonstrating is because libraries are effective. We bring to bear resources literally for everyone, whether that's online, whether that is in the library, either way, it doesn't matter. And a lot of us, if you're in this room, you have the privilege to have driven here tonight or found a friend to bring you, and you have time in your life to be here and sit here and listen to these things. So many people do not. And libraries serve those people, and that's almost more important than what we would like. We have people who, through the library, can improve their job skills and get new jobs. We have students who can get tutoring online through their library and support. I know if my kid came home with geometry today, he'd be out of luck. But I can turn to the library for that kind of support. We have folks that run their small business out of the libraries because there's consistent and reliable broadband internet. So these are ways that libraries are economic drivers for communities. In a lot of communities, there's a lack of preschool, affordable or otherwise. Even if you're eligible for free, you might not still be able to get in. The library serves as preschool for so many children. We want those kids to be ready to learn when they go to school, and the library provides that. So all of this money that could be left on the table if King William decides to withdraw does make me sad because it's that much more money that will, the money would just be reallocated to other libraries, right? Libraries are still going to get this money. But don't you want this for your community and the difference this makes in your community? And the difference this makes in your community. Do I have another slide? Oh, look at that, I do. So there are some stipulations to getting state aid. And this is in a different part of the code called Virginia Administrative Code. And it's even more boring than the legislative code. So in order to get state aid, you have to have local operating expenditures of at least fifty percent of the median expenditures by all the libraries in Virginia. And right now, that's about seventeen dollars. Y'all are in good shape. Right now with Pamunki, you're at about thirty-one dollars and sixty-two cents per citizen. And I think you would be fine if King William's costs remain the same. You would still be above that fifty percent median, so you're fine there. Libraries attaining aid for the first time, which would be King William if King William chose to withdraw, or those falling below that median must meet that requirement in the first five years. Libraries that fall below that and a library that's newly joining or newly receiving state aid has to be on a five-year plan. And they get a little harbor scrutiny from us on the data that they provide and the funding that they provide to their library. And within those five years, local, the last sentence is critical here. Local operating expenditure shall not fall below that of the previous year. So this is the carrot and the stick of state aid. They understand times get hard. So if locality has to cut budgets, those budgets must be cut across all divisions. You can't just say, oh, the library, we can cut them, we're only gonna cut them. Because then you're gonna lose your state aid. Okay? Does that make sense? So it's the carrot and the stick. The more you spend, the more we're gonna give you, is what the Virginia General Assembly is telling you. And to cut budgets is gonna endanger that. So for King William to come and say, okay, we're just gonna have, we're gonna withdraw, and we're gonna have that six hundred and three thousand dollars. If they start chipping away at that and the cost reduces, they're gonna be leaving state aid on the table. And if they don't keep that median expenditure, they may lose state aid entirely. This happened to Nottaway County, not because they withdrew from the system, but because somebody wasn't paying attention, and they lost their state aid entirely for five years. Yeah. So do I have another slide? Yes, I do. Oh, here's what, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Okay, so there's kind of, wide cuts can be excused if they're across the board, but you can't single out the libraries. Um, I said all of that. Yeah, so if you, if you decided to withdraw, your state aid would increase more than what Pamunki is allocating, you know, what is technically being allocated, but that is not enough money to hire a library director, hire a cataloger, get an ILS, get all the furniture, because I'm pretty sure the furniture belongs to Pamunki. When King and Queen withdrew from Pamunki, Pamunki kept the books, kept the computers, kept all of that. So with your local expenditures, if they remain the same, add in that amount of state aid, you know, that looks like a pretty healthy budget until you actually do the work. I was the person who did the cost benefits.
That's in the next slide.
Did you actually put that in? Good job. Yeah, so I'm the person who did this. Y'all saw the split around about a month and a half ago. What I did was took the current known cost from Pamunki, some of the things you can't know. Like, we don't know what it would cost to replicate what you're getting from Pamunki right now. That would have to be negotiated with the vendors. We don't know what the infrastructure might cost to buy all the new printers, all the new computers, all the new everything. But I can guarantee you it's more than the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in state aid you would receive. What I also did that isn't depicted here was I found a locality that was similar in size, geography, and demography to King William. The only one I could find was Buchanan County Public Library, which is, you know, south of, southwest of Hornet. They have a similar population, similar, they look, they look very much the same in the census. They're a little bigger than you, they have one library. Their total budget is almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Eight hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, and they are a very well-respected library, and they do good services, and they, but that's for one library. And to double that, I just don't understand how it could happen for six hundred and five thousand dollars. So yeah, it's gonna probably cost well over a million dollars for King William to replicate the services you're getting from Pamunki on this path.
Can you define what collection costs means?
So that's the books.
The books is that, is that online as well, or is that just the books?
That is just the physical books. The online books would be in the digital library services.
We built a estimate for two libraries, two libraries, two libraries, a special library.
I agree. This was, yeah. That number was pulled from what Pamunki could provide to me. But again, because they have a contract with presumably Verizon across, or whatever your provider is here, Verizon across all of the localities, your electric company across the localities, it is lower because they, economy of scale.
And to receive the funding, the state also requires a certain number of employees.
Do we require you to have a certain number of employees?
Yeah, per, per your population.
Okay, so the library director, if you have a population over fifteen thousand, which you do, your library director must have a master's degree in library information science. There are some localities that are small, you know, under that fifteen thousand mark, don't. But we can't make a locality whose population is so small and can't afford a graduate-level or qualified director, they just can't pay them. So that's the rationale there. I mean, to, to attract somebody to a tiny rural library, you've got to pay them. And that, that was my other thing I talked about with your former assistant county administrator. Oh, hey, hello. I was explaining when we met that time with the Director of Finance and to the Board Supervisors meeting, Supervisors and the person, young lady. I was explaining that in order, and we've seen this happening right now in other tiny rural communities, they cannot get a library director at that, you know, if they're right at that mark of fifteen thousand or higher, they're having to pay seventy, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to get someone to relocate there. So to get a library director in King William that is qualified and effective, they're like, they pay. So these, so, so that's me, I'm the one who did that. And I really, my only goal, my only goal is for citizens to have the best library services that they can get and use and have access to, and have the taxpayer dollar be used most wisely. And strictly from that point of view, like, I don't really know your community very well, except rob not the friends every now and then. But from just a fiscal responsibility, regionalism makes sense to me. And I don't think there's anything else to that one. Nope. So I am gonna stick around, but I'll turn it back over to Fran.
Thank you. Last month, the last month, a number of us sent letters to each of the board members with a possible solution that would allow us to save some money, but still maintain our services and still be part of the Pamunki Regional Library. And we suggested moving the Upper King William Library to a county-owned facility to do away with the thirty-three thousand dollars rent that we're currently paying. So that would help reduce costs. And we did not get a positive response to that suggestion. So that's where we are now. And I think now it's time for questions and answers.
Fran, could you give the other stats from this?
The question is, did we get any response? And we did get acknowledgement of receipt. Is that fair, Mr.? We really, yeah, acknowledged it.
All right, when I met with Steve and some of the other folks, we were at the facility, I think that's being discussed. And very little would have to be done to make that into a good library. So I, I just, I guess I had to say I'm a little shocked that that is not. Because I have also been to Upper King William branch, and that you're paying thirty-three thousand dollars annually for that is Pamunki.
So, yes.
I've kind of made some notes, I'm gonna, I think I have four major questions.
Okay.
Goochland's budget went up from twenty-four to twenty-five percent. What made that go up? Either population, is it based on population?
No, no, I, I do know the answer to that. Goochland County, after the Pamunki Regional Library presented their budget request for the same number of hours that Goochland was at that point open, which I think was fifty-two or something, the Goochland County Board came back and said, we want our library open more hours. Tell us how much it would cost. And the library told them, and they said, yes, let's do that. So they gave them more than they were.
So is the six hundred and seven thousand dollars that you're currently paying right now, is that based on the population size of King William County? What is it based on?
It's based on the actual, our twelve percent share of the shared services, which is...
How many are the twelve percent?
Because we are twelve percent of the total regional population. Goochland is sixteen or seventeen, and seventy, seventy-two percent is what Hannover is. So when we go all together, and we're at this, you know, we, together, we buy all of those books. Together, we buy the integrated library system that allows you to get things from home. Together, we buy the van that brings those books from Goochland to you at West Point or to you.
So if the population size of King William grows, we could expect to pay more than twelve percent with all these houses they're building?
Oh, I will tell you, they're building houses in Goochland and Hannover too.
So we could say the same, but...
It, it has been virtually the same since I started working there in nineteen seventy-seven.
Okay, and then you had said that the shared services, the twelve percent of the shared services was two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So the remaining of that six hundred thousand was all for staff and buildings, electricity and all of that.
And our two branches.
And the two branches. And then the last thing I have on here is only because I'm looking at this from people that are for the independent library perspective. The collection cost that you had on the slide of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, I can see them wanting to have a formal breakdown of what all that includes. Does that mean buying a hundred thousand books every year? What exactly does that consist of? Because I can, you know, reading the remarks on Facebook and stuff, I think, well, we don't need that many. So I would be interested in seeing a breakdown of what that consists of. Is it so much for magazines, so much for children's books, so much for educational? I would like to have a better understanding of what, what that is.
I don't have that information, but Nan may have some, she's gonna look on her computer.
Yeah, if you don't have it tonight, you could get it, maybe post it somewhere. That would be an interesting fact that I could see.
If there's somebody here who might, did you?
Well, from what I have learned, there are collection managers whose job it is to collect data down to a ridiculous level of the circulation numbers for the collection. And they use those numbers, it's kind of a communication between the collection data and the population. And they are communicating about what the community wants by using the materials. Even if you go in a library and you pick up a book, you look at it and you set it down, because they want to be shelved and you have to be shelved it. They mark that off and say, that book got touched, that book got used. And that way, they know how to manage the collection.
And I'm just saying from the, the people that are against it, I can see them saying, we don't need that many books each year.
So to, to that point though, so, and, you know, the, the entering argument being made by the county is not with anything anybody's saying on Facebook. No one cares what they say. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't need it, but I'm just trying to...
No, 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 but my point is that the county's statement to us is, we're going to maintain the existing services, which means if I go into West Point and there are thirty thousand books in there today, tomorrow or on January first of twenty twenty-seven, there will be thirty thousand books. That's what they said they're, they're doing, that's their commitment. So the only thing we need to analyze is, how much would it cost to ensure that the number of books that are there today are the number of books that will be there on January first, twenty twenty-seven? Now, we all know that, and not captured here, is there are startup costs, right? Because all those books, all that Wi-Fi hotspots, all the digital services, all this is gonna go away if we pull out of Pamunki, which means they have to be replaced. The costs that you're showing there, please correct me if I'm saying this wrong, are the operational costs, year to year, that you're gonna have to pay for to keep those books on the shelves because books wear out, you gotta rotate them through, some books need to be replaced. So you're gonna, there's gonna be some unstated amount of dollars that are gonna have to be expanded by the taxpayers to replace the existing inventory that is currently present in both libraries if we pull out of PRL. That's the first thing we have to acknowledge, is that it's gonna be something well north of a million dollars to buy all that stuff and put it in, furniture, all that crap. And then we're gonna have to run it for a year, and we have to pay that one point one million or so per year, every year for, in perpetuity, index to inflation, minimum, right? Because we can't scale back, et cetera. Does that answer?
And, and I'd like to add just one other thing to that. You know, we have thirty thousand approximately, I guess, in West Point and close to that, probably Upper King William. But we also have all those hundreds of thousands of other books in every library, in Pamunki Regional Library. And that is, that's the real joy of it, and you can get it delivered to you for free. Exactly, so...
That's a, the point, that's a valid point to, to highlight for everyone is, the, the board cannot actually do what they said they would do because it's physically impossible to match the total services that we currently have. The best they can do is keep the two existing library inventories where they are right now, along with whatever services that the library...
Yeah, we have another question up here.
I would like to point out a few instances of books.
That, that figure.
It's something, it's twenty of that, you know, but...
It's on here, it's on this piece of paper. Yeah. We'll find that number, and it's, it's a huge number, far more than we'll be able to... We're looking here with our glasses on because the print is small. Uh, who had, is there a question back here? Around seven hundred thousand for books, he says, yeah. At, at least seven hundred every year. Yeah. Seven hundred and sixty-five thousand is what. And, and I will tell you that state aid, unless this is changed, state aid money must be spent for collections. Virtually all of it are for...
So state aid can be spent on collections, it can be spent on subscriptions, it can be spent on contracts that... it can be spent on contracts that allow you to do business, like if you rent copy machines, things like that. It cannot be used for other operating expenses. And that is one thing that people really need to make sure that you understand, is that operating expenses, aside from collections and those kinds of things that support the library, it cannot be used for the electrical, it cannot be used for gas, it cannot be used for other staff. It must be used in these very specific ways. Many libraries do only use it for collections.
And in fact, I think Pumonkey only uses it. At least in my time, we only used it for collections. So we've got a question back there, and then we'll come to you, Betsy.
Yes, fine.
Brian, this was a great information tonight. I think it's just three forces, boy. We've been hearing for some time, and that is that it's not gonna be cheaper to establish our own library. So, I guess my question is, what I'm hearing essentially is that the opposition is not really concerned about the cost. They're concerned about the content of the books. They're in the libraries, and I'm just wondering if they do it. You don't need to focus on that as well as the cost. Maybe, maybe from a taxpayer's standpoint, cost is all you need to know. But the opposition has got some concerns, uh-
Yes. I, I, you, uh, I'm saying, that, that's my husband. Who has definite ideas about this, but he'll have to tell them to privately. I, I will say that, that our Save the King William Libraries Group has chosen to focus on the costs. Because in every official statement by the board, and in every private conversation that I have had, the board has said it is only about the costs. Does anybody here have any other information about that? That they feel would be relevant? Mr. Edwards?
As a former library board member, I'm being told that we're a group of, that, uh, also is another, it's not a group. It is absolutely not that. They want to regulate the books, but they're, they're not too much.
But isn't there a legal aspect of that? That they don't put those books that we all know like in the library, and you open yourself up for a lawsuit? No, but I was reading there's-
When I was in the theater, that's what we were, that's-
That's what I raised. So this county would be taking on that risk, legal risk that could cost a lot of money, and what- Oh, it will?
When I was in the theater, when I was in the theater, King County had been exposed to violation of privacy. And we were, you're saying, how many, how many people are this? I think, how many of them are giving the same advice? But then we, but you know, we, we had one, we were playing, we were, I don't know, uh, we smoked, I'm serious. We began not, you know, every time I hear somebody going, uh, I'll try to kill.
And-
That is the way this is here. Well, am I wrong when I say, um, the library is so responsible for this physical episode? Has nothing to do with the books, uh?
That's, that's a governing board. Now, we do have a couple of other questions, so, go ahead.
I knew, I, when they say "they," is this "they"? Is this "they" that we're talking about? When you guys say "they," so it's whatever I knew, so it's "they"?
There, we're talking about a couple of groups of people. When I've been talking about the Board of Supervisors, "they," I sometimes use "they." The Board of Supervisors, whose names are on that list, and one of whose members is sitting right behind you, Mr. Hodges. Yeah. The Board of Supervisors are the ones, are the governing body of our county who fund us, the library system, through tax dollars and have a contract with two other counties to provide this service. The other "they" that some of us have been referring to are the people who run the Independent Library. I'm s- I do not do Facebook, but if somebody votes-
King William Independent Library Facebook page.
Okay, King William for an Independent Library Facebook page. I will not recommend that you go there. I have not, I have been sent far too many screenshots, one of which, in one of which, I was called a needy company. Uh, and, and Mr., um- Yeah, so- So, that's part of the "they." And the other part of the "they" is the board who makes the decisions. And they are the Board of Supervisors. Now, Betsy, you have a question.
Well, I wanted to go back to the number of books in the collection. And at some of the Board of Supervisors meetings, I heard people concerned that if we leave PRL, we don't own any books. How, we've been paying all this money, we don't own any books. And they're stuck on that. And you have to realize it's a leasing system. Like when you lease your car, you get the, the updated card. I don't want it to read the books from twenty-five years ago. I want to read the newly published books. I want our collection to be updated. And therefore, owning the individual book that may fall apart, yeah.
It's, it's definitely the service. Well, it has to do with money, but it also has to do with quality of service. There any other questions? Audrey?
I have, I have a question. I'm not commenting on what we're talking about in books we don't own in the library. When you take a child under eighteen years old into the library to get a library card, it says very distinctly that the parents are the people who are in charge of what's checked out by their, it's, it's a parent responsibility. So I feel like, to me, that has been a lucky word. They're like, "Oh, my daughter's my, my child of the earth." Well, I can tell you, I doubt there's ten kids in the entire King William County that walk to the library. And maybe a high school, but in King William, it's not very, I mean, the high school kids may go there, but there's not a lot of little kids that walk into that library. So I feel like that was, that was something that they, they said. The, the people who were complaining, the independent complain. Uh, but the thing I wanted to know was, Hannah, and I know we don't- To me, it would look like Hannah and Goochland would be willing to say, "We want one of our country because we're moving out." And for Goochland and the other vote, it's gonna increase their expense when we move out. So to me, I'm wondering, has that been a part of anyone's conversation with anybody over there?
I don't have any direct knowledge of that, but I can tell you that in the past, all of the counties participating understood the value and the benefits of a regional library system. Yeah, I, I don't think Hannah or Goochland are going to say, "Go away." Yes?
We've been told that there'd be no law when you're in a mechanic store, law, or, is that true?
If, if, I, I cannot answer that question directly, but I can tell you what happened in the case of King William. Um, King and Queen, sorry. I, I promised a friend who lives in King and Queen, who's very sensitive about this, that I wouldn't talk about King and Queen, but I will. King and Queen chose to withdraw from the regional library system. At the point they withdrew, the library board said, "For at least two years, citizens of your county will have no access to the Pumonkey Regional Library system." You can walk into the building, but you cannot check out a book. Your library card is invalid, you cannot use the digital resources, et cetera. I don't know the answer. Uh, if King William withdraws, I don't know what that, what that will mean. In our contract, that is not specified. It is decided by the, the library board and the other counties at the time of withdrawal.
Well, there's, there's statements of contempt where very clearly spelled out in there rescinding their, uh, withdrawal. Uh, so, what, yeah, they were very, very, very clear about that.
Yeah, our meeting was very positive. Um, the two supervisors that were present were very kind and very receptive. Uh, Mr. Hutchins and Mr. Wilson, I think his name was. Robinson and Mrs. Baymore. I thought it was a real, I mean, we came away having had a really good conversation, and both of the supervisors were like, "Wow, this is pretty eye-opening." Um, I did get heavily FOIA'd after that meeting to, um, you know, ask what my level of communication had been with the interim director at Pumonkey. I produced all of those documents, they're, they have nothing to hide. My only goal is best library service and tax dollar stewardship. That's it. That's my job. Um, and so, I, you know, I know that I was also accused of things, and that's fine. But, that's fine. Um, but the meeting was very positive, so I was, wasn't surprised when they came back and rescinded the original thing, because they, the supervisors were also very, um, in tune with what I was saying. All that came after, I have no idea. But as a state employee, I'm an open book. I'm required to be by law. And I just don't operate any other way. So people can say what they want to say, but math is math, and Excel did the adding, so I'm pretty sure it was fairly accurate.
Yes.
Um, there are a couple of questions on the Facebook Live.
Yes.
Okay, um, one is, "How many regional library systems exist in Virginia? How many counties are part of these regional library systems in Virginia?" Santa.
And- And Oklahoma.
And there's a, someone answered that and said that there were seventy percent of libraries in Virginia that were labeled independent. Now, I, so-
So let me talk about this whole independent library thing. Um, there, I, I, there are either twelve or fifteen. Um, I have a little bit of numeric dyslexia, so the two and the five are suspect.
Of what?
Okay, of regional libraries in Virginia. The biggest one being Longsome Pine Regional Library out in southwest Virginia that covers five counties. Um, and I was just down in Lee County, one of them, explaining exactly this to them a couple of weeks ago. Um, they were doing their impossible analysis. They wouldn't be doing their job if they weren't asking the question, right? So, great, please ask the questions. So it's either twelve or fifteen in my brain, those two get swapped around. This is why Excel does my math. The independent library thing is a misnomer. Libraries are structured in one of three ways. You could be a regional lib-, in a regional library system. You can be a department of your city or county. And that's what they're calling independent here. I think that's what the King William people are calling here. But it's not an independent library. Then there are a handful of libraries that are organized as 501(c)(3)'s that are not part of regions. Lancaster County, for example, their Lancaster Public Library is a 501(c)(3). That is hard lift, because not only do you have to run your library and keep your staff and all those, you then also have to raise money. They behave as if they were departments of their city or county because they're expending taxpayer dollars. So everything they do is, they do as if they were a local government, but they've got this added layer of having to go every year to make their case to their county. An independent library would be something like the National Sporting Library in Middleburg, Virginia, that is off on its own, and it does not have a governing, it, it doesn't, it isn't answerable, answerable to us to get state aid, to meet our standards, to do whatever. Um, another independent library example is, um, it's in Perrisburg, and I can't remember the name of it, but it's basically a, a community volunteer-driven library. They don't have to answer it us, they don't have to do, you know, they do their own thing. That's an independent library. What the folks who want to withdraw from Pumonkey are calling an independent library is not. It's, that's a county library. Um, so I'm not really sure how that nomenclature got so conflated, but that's what's real about how libraries are organized in Virginia.
I think Middlesex started years ago while we were living down there. And they say, "We're funding a lot, we're saying, um, five or-"
Five or one, so three. And they still operating?
Yeah.
Middlesex and Dulphville?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
That being said, just from a prior perspective, what percentage of the libraries in Virginia are not a part of the regional library system that are currently there?
A lot.
And I, I think that's what the, the-
Yeah, except the original question you were asking.
That was the real question you were asking.
Okay, okay.
Something like seventy percent.
Yeah, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but the bulk of libraries that are not a regional are departments of their county or city. So I, a majority.
Does that mean that they're, they're answerable to the library of Virginia?
In order to get state aid.
And get state aid.
No, that's the only authority we have of all libraries, is state aid. But it's pretty specific what you have to do to get state aid.
Did, did you say that it's fifteen regional libraries in state of Virginia?
Or twelve. Let's be real, it's like-
But depending on the, the number of numbers you use in one of those regions, it's gonna go up. I think it's ninety, ninety-six and ninety-seven counties in state of Virginia. So if each region of those twelve has fewer numbers, then that would add up to around as many as-
So there are ninety-four library entities that we give state aid, ninety-two. Ninety-four. So subtract that from the number of localities, which I think is a hundred and-
There are places with the cities, uh-
Yeah.
But I was just talking about-
The counties that not, I don't, I don't really know.
I think it was a hundred and seven counties with localities. It's gonna be-
I don't keep in my brain things I can look up quickly, so that, that, I don't know that right off the top of my head, but that sounds right to me. The localities, so the one, the regional libraries are typically for the benefit of rural communities. That's who we see banding together for best service. I could not find another locality of your population that was not in a regional library system, except for the King William County Library. And it's a really big county, so it makes sense that they're not attached to somebody else? Yes, sir?
In independent libraries, as y'all are talking about, who elects?
In a county library?
Well, yes, if they didn't play with this, and went to this other library, who will elect to be in the program?
I'm, I'm sure you realize by now, there is no easy answer to that.
You got your answer right there.
Yeah, so, yes, the county, so, it, it is an it depends sort of situation. In some counties, and I'm only talking about counties, right, the Board of Supervisors appoints, yeah. In other counties, um, there can be a mix of board appointees and other citizens. So it, it depends, but typically, typically, they would appoint, supervisors would appoint the board, the board members. I will say-
Anybody that even wanted in that position to do exactly what they want to do.
So what I will say about that is that I have heard, I do not know if this is true, that King William also would like to be added. There's a piece of, of- There's a piece of legislative code that allows certain localities to not have a governing board. And King William would like to be on that list. So that there would be no board. The board would be the board of supervisors.
So, yes, that is the answer. I see a hand in the back here. Hi. All right, folks, we've got a question.
Interesting question. So, we've been kind of going through the board supervisors, we've not known how to speak to them, and feel like, you know, it's always been a passion to feel about all the libraries and how to speak to them. But when I received the document recently that talked about this group discussing how to make the library more physically responsible and taking that to the board supervisors. Do we actually have a number that, I saw something about moving the upper tier of county branch to another area, you'd say thirty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, that's the grant.
Now, I believe on that document, there was two other points discussed. One concerning the hours for the library is urgent. And I have the document, pardon me, but I, I just want to know, so on a night when I go, I will have a number in my head of how much money we would be saving in the library if they took those options.
Well, at this point, it's thirty-three thousand dollars. Because we are now, our budget figure now with Plumunkie Regional Library puns us to open our two branches only forty-six hours a week? Thirty-nine, I'm sorry, thirty-nine hours a week. That's not even a full-time library. Now, forty hours is full-time, but fifty-two is the right number for our community. And until July of this year, our libraries were both open fifty-two hours a week. So, I think if there are no more questions, we'll go on. Yes.
One more question.
Uh-huh.
When we cut the hours to the library, it was because PRL increased their budget, right?
Well...
Or how much of an increase was it? Do we know?
The salaries, the salaries increased by three percent, I think, which was in line with other county...
But for the, for the entire six hundred thousand, what, how much wasn't, how much was it that it increased?
Oh, that they requested.
Yeah.
How much of the PRL department's...
Yeah.
Their request was for an additional forty-eight percent.
What was that percentage?
It's about seven point eight percent.
Seven point eight percent.
Because that covered the three or four percent salary increase for regional libraries. Specifically, those in our branches and in portion of the share with the client and other operators concerned with utilities. We also...
So, I'm curious as to other county budgets, like the police department, courthouse, whatever, how much did they increase compared to that? I mean, that's just something I'm curious.
Yeah.
So, what, I just pop onto that because it's important, you know, we've danced around it a couple of times, but there's a, the fiscal argument doesn't hold any water. Primarily because we don't have any numbers because they haven't done any analysis, right? We've provided them this analysis. They've said it's not accurate. The board of supervisors said they don't think it's an accurate picture. The one point one million is accurate. But they haven't presented any alternative numbers to say this is what we think it's going to cost and these are the surfaces that we expect to cross. So, the cost analysis hasn't been done, not a long comparison against other budgetary items and so forth. When Mr. Catlett put up his analysis, which wasn't an analysis, but it was sort of a comparison of other locational independent libraries, his lowest cost best-case library was five hundred fifty K and it was one library. So, it's five hundred fifty thousand dollars for a single library. That, that's, if you got to that number, that would be one percent of the budget. But there's no comparison against any other numbers in the budgetary line items or anything. There's no actual fiscal argument to be made. Unfortunately, we are, that's the only argument we're fighting against, but that, but we don't have one because the board has been fairly close to the vest on the details of their financial analysis, because quite frankly, they don't have it. The, you know, the real reason that...
Yeah.
Exactly. The real reason, which we are not arguing with because the board has not given that argument, because the board has not presented to the community what their real driver for wanting to withdraw.
Well, I've heard them argue before, I've heard somebody argue before, saying that, well, PRL could just go up any amount they want. We have no say-so.
They've said that, but they have not...
And that's why I was curious that, okay, like if their budget went up seven point eight percent, how much did the other, the school budget go up? How much did the courthouse budget go up? The sheriff's department, you know, everything. I know my grocery set's gone up fifty, sixty percent.
Inflation was eight percent the year that the rate had been, so we were actually just under inflation, consistent with inflation for the year, or peak inflation for that year.
And they chose to reduce our hours instead of pay the salary to the staff salary increases, which is gold medal.
I think it's, we have one more question and then we're going to go, then we're going to talk about what's coming next. So...
Can we talk about savings of thirty-three thousand dollars if we move to a...
Well, if we move to a county-owned facility.
A county-owned...
I'm not suggesting where because we need to, the county and the library together, hopefully.
Whichever you do, there are going to be other costs involved.
Exactly. Yes, there will be other costs involved. So, at this point, I, we've been trying to make our voices heard. I know many, many of us have talked to the board supervisors. Some of us, like me, have talked far too many times. And December ninth is their final meeting before this self-imposed deadline. I hope that all of you will be there or will use this information somehow to talk with those other four board members. And I do want to thank Mr. Hodges for being here because I think you understand. Exactly. They did. So, I, at this point, we, those of us who put all this together, would love to hear if you have any ideas of how we can make this, how we can encourage the other members of the board to do the right thing. Yes, exactly. We only need to...
From a political perspective, there's nothing that's that, is there anything that we can be legal? If we got enough people to sign something, could that stop them from doing this? I mean, I don't, I ask you for that number. Right. That's, I mean, that's my question. Is there anything that we can do to say, let the citizens of the county make this decision, not the board?
Next year, you have a chance, next year.
Well, I hate to tell you this, but one of them is sitting right here. Mr. Hodges goes off the board.
Well, they're paying for consultants to do things that this is, in King William County, I mean, who pays a consultant to do something in King William? Unless, like you said, somebody's making it from another.
So, we've heard the word referendum and we've talked about that in the past. Do you have, yeah?
If we wrote all these people or if this one person that started all this, this Stacey Davenport, I mean, do they, if we all write them, do they not, are they under some kind of obligation to come up with figures if they're stating this or not?
Many, many, they've received many communications, right, Mr. Hodges? You've received many communications about this. Yes. So, I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Hodges, but can you suggest, can you suggest anything to us?
So, the practical reality, just my two senses. The practical reality is that the board is currently in power and until they are no longer in power, they get to say, that's how it works. Elections have consequences. Similarly, decisions that elected officials make have political consequences.
On a TV station.
Right. So, the only, only thing that will motivate them to do something differently is if they make the political calculation, that they will suffer a political cost for doing so. So, as people present themselves to the board and make the argument and those numbers swell, they will then have to make that mental calculation as to whether or not enough people are mad about it, that they will suffer for it. That's the only reality, it's only power that...
There are a lot of people that don't get on Facebook. You need more in the country courier about these facts. Do you want your taxes to go up to have an independent library? Because if you let people know that it's going to cost them more money, that might have a bigger effect than any...
Well, I will say that the online petition had over seven hundred and fifty signatures. And I know for a fact that some of those signatures were one person in a household of five or six. They would not allow their children to sign it because they didn't want to be accused of padding the numbers, but it was a family group. Now, it's true, we need two other board members on our side. And I'd like to know if any of you have an idea of the two, yes?
This is just for everyone's information. On the Plumunkie Regional Library website, if you go to the main page and you see about PRL and you click on, and then go to the board of trustees, they have started posting the data for every branch in every county for usage, circulation, visits, program attendance. And that is a good messaging tool to use to show, the data shows that this is a valuable service.
Thank you.
And so, that information is then posted on the Plumunkie Regional website. And it's awesome. It's beautifully laid out. You can understand and follow it.
Thank you, Peggy. That's a new thing that each of us can send to our supervisor. That's another thing. We've got some other suggestion. If everybody here goes to tell at least one other person they know what you learned tonight and ask them to take action, I think that would be helpful. Are you all willing to do that?
So, Mr. Hodges there is, is for staying with the PRL. And he said one of his supervisors, and I'm sorry, is it...
No, no, no. Mr. Hodges is the only one at this point that I, who I know personally. I don't, maybe some of you know another supervisor who would be willing to join in?
There's only one board supervisor.
The other four are all about one.
Is this on the agenda?
We don't know if it's on the agenda or not because the agenda hasn't been published yet.
So, we're not going to know until the first meeting next year and then they're going to say, well, now we're out.
That's one, that's one possibility.
That being said, whether it's on the agenda or not, and this is how Fran and several of us who have spoken to the board, there's always a citizen comment period. And...
And they sit there like this.
Yes. But, but that is our opportunity, that is our last opportunity for, to show in large numbers, to show up and speak to the board. And we can make that board meeting pretty long because if everyone in this room showed up on the night, we'll have three minutes per person, so we can do that math. And we can make that a very, very long, very, very painful citizen's comment period. What's that? Right. It's five if only like twelve show up, but it would be three, three minutes per person, multiply that out, that would be a long night for everyone to make, make the point, but that's...
Got another comment over here? Fifty?
By the way, he's obviously written press release for Plumunkie. He obviously wrote that press release. He has said one of these things, the Democrats live nationally, so we should assume that they're going to live regionally. So, they are simply treating us as the local library. And he's telling them simply, don't have a meeting after this appointment, don't discuss what people bring up in meetings. Just act as if it's not there and you have the power and you can do what you want. And it easily feels a little easy to duck in somebody's hand, but that's her part, but that's essentially what we're looking at. To pick over in order to, for Robinson to, they see this as a political advantage for the future. And once he tells somebody that she is going to be...
So...
So, this is kind of going to be, to perceive negative movement, like, they're going to make a name for themselves by tracking the library. It doesn't matter that they're giving five hundred thousand dollars in resources on the table. They have a political component.
And I think all we can...
Their activities are really far away from everything.
I'm a Republican myself.
But you're not American.
This is a, when an elected official is supposed to serve in groups that he was elected in, not to call him a Democrat. And you're right about that, but it ain't got nothing to do with the Democratic Party.
Yeah, okay.
So, I have a que, I have a question.
Yes, we have a question over here. John, you can speak.
So, my question is, if in January they decide to leave the Plumunkie Regional Library and then it won't come, it won't totally be in effect for two years, is there time within that two years to reverse and decide not to leave?
In case you didn't hear the question, the question is, if the board on January, whatever their first meeting is, says, we're withdrawing, we're giving you two years notice, do we have time within those two years to get them to change their mind? I don't know the answer to that. It's, according to NAN, it's up to the other two counties. So, if Anover and Goochland find it of great value to have King William as a partner in this, they might agree to take us back if we, if we wanted to come back. Yes.
Quick question. Do you know this presentation is going to be posted tomorrow?
Yes.
Is it going to be sent to the supervisors so that they cannot say, I don't see it?
Yes. Yes. I, I am doing that personally. Do you know the answer to that? No, we will be reminding them. I have reminded my supervisor of that on a regular basis, but we haven't presented it officially. You remember us, I don't think we presented that petition officially to the board. No. So, we will plan to do that on...
Because they keep saying they're doing this for the child.
Yeah. Well... It, that too is...
So, when they give the conference at Plumunkie, they're trying to, what, years for consultants? And they do so that the people sell when they're at Plumunkie, and they're pretty sincere, and they're doing the fantastic part that people can't help but say, they're wonderful. And that's a challenge.
Okay. We should go. Henri?
Henri, over here, so I mean, this goes back on, goes back to whenever we have the library, which goes to... There were plappers that we put into a fund for... There were plappers that would be put into a fund for the future library building. I'm pretty sure that I'm right about that. And there was a piece of land designated originally in Connecticut, and then it went up the road. What happened to those two things? Huh? I know it's good to the land, what are they doing with the money?
I don't think the property's mine, but I think the only property is mine.
Oh, was it just the money?
The previous rule, big way in the process of building a library slave community center. We never got to, we didn't want to be a part of the community. And we're working, and we're working to decide, so we still have, we're all the places that are in the office in the world. We have plenty of units on the square, and they were taken in for, and we never got any time to design a library.
Right, because they mentioned there was office access, there was city lines, and we would see, and every question we had, and we would respond first. They think we have for six months' time, and those are good.
That's right. I know. And I think we need to remind them of that, too.
And you'll believe, so they stopped running.
We, our, we do this part, because we didn't want to give the library anything as an idea. So, it was part of what I thought came along, of this part is there, and they play on, and the future of the element of this part is there. So, I think we are trying to, so...
I don't know if the county still...
You're not going to speak?
No, but I mean, because at least they can solve something, they can something, they can, they can solve.
They can change the usage, you know, how it's, how it was to be such and such. Or if you change the usage, you could say, can't you see?
We have another comment question.
Yeah, comment, Stephen. As we're perusing our air, this is an ideology. Doesn't have to do with political parties. And part of that ideology is, surely, they want the content, but they feel they have the power, we have the Board of Supervisors who are serving their ideology and not their constituencies. Talking to them, you're not going to change these people's minds. They're not going to change. The only thing I can think of, embarrass the hell out of them. Identify that that's what they're doing, that they are not serving their constituencies.
We need a big ad in the country carrier, it's like I said, not everybody is online, not everybody is on Facebook. And I think we need to draw... Well, something.
Just embarrass them, that's the only way. And beat them back. I mean, they're not just going to say, oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, we're going to do this. It's like force them down.
It certainly won't happen through one-on-one conversations or emails or anything. It'll only happen in the public sessions, and which goes back to my earlier point, at the end of the day, the only opportunity that citizens can have is at the public meetings, during the public comment period. That is our opportunity to express ourselves. The more people who do that, you know, honestly, if I were on the Board, I would be sick and tired of talking about this, and I would want to get rid of it as quickly as possible. Because, right? But that is the only way that will, and so unless the Board's time is consumed by concerned citizens, that is the only real way. Like you said, you're going to beat them back. It's not going to be one-on-one conversations, because we've tried that, lots of people have emailed them and asked them, tried, and walked, talked to them one-on-one. The Board so far has not seemed to change course, although to be fair to the Board, they did change course a little bit, right? They pulled back, and they said, we're going to enter negotiations. We don't know what the negotiations are, we don't know how they're going, we don't know what they're negotiating on. And they could, over Christmas, decide to pull out, and on the December, you know, January, the first meeting in January, they announce they're going to pull out. And if they do that, all we can do is make it as painful for the Board as possible. That's all we can really do. And I think you're right, that we need to spread the word so that as many people are galvanized to do that as possible. But at the end of the day, the only leverage that the community has is to consume the Board's time.
Yes, back in the...
I just wanted to pick off that, I think that they're hoping that we're all going to be so busy with our holiday planning, and work, and we're not going to make the meet. So, I would just hope that, you know, you're all there, I'm going to be there, you know, because I think that's one of the, this is a way to, you know, try to get you to think of other things, get you off of it. And I would just, stay on that.
So, thank you, Sarah. I think that the plan is bring your friends and family, too. Yes, yes, bring your children. They're the ones who are really going to suffer.
And come early if you're going to sign up to talk.
Yes.
Because they take away the sign-ups.
Exactly.
My wife wants to, the film's five years in the...
Yes, several people here have applied to be on the library board. Yes.
There is one other option.
What other option?
A petition.
A petition?
Individual warrant, if the law is going to...
Stand again, and for sale of your signatures, and the people that voted in that district can haul for a reelection.
In other words, you can do a recall?
Yeah, but it has to be, except for like the constitutional officers, it can be county law in the fifth district, and the people in the fifth district that voted for the person that's on there now.
So, I, what I'm hearing you say is that there's a possibility for a recall of a Board member if ten percent of the voters in their district saw that voted, or just ten percent of the voters?
I think vote.
Ten, okay, so if in the fifth district, two thousand people voted, then what's ten percent of two thousand? If we could get two... So, if a thousand people voted, and we could get a hundred signatures from that district...
For a recall vote.
Then we could have a recall vote, which would be an election, or like a new election. But we'd have to have a candidate who supported the library to run against them.
Looking at the age of people in here, I think we have a few hippies. Couple of broke tennis suit, this baby.
Yeah, I think there are a few of us still around.
Talking about elections, speaking about elections, there are elections for, there were two, two members of the Board of Supervisors and two members of the school board that were elected for a two-year term, which is supposed to be a staggered term, this board oversaw it, but still, those people are still only two-year people. So, the first district and fifth district have to run again. And so, we know who's in, the Board of Supervisors for those districts. One is not coming back. But we need, fifth district...
Are you interested in that?
We need candidates. We need candidates. What I'm trying to say is, we need people who are willing to step up and run for the fifth district Board of Supervisors, first district Board of Supervisors. I don't know the status of the current school board candidates, if they're running again or not, but stay tuned. But the problem, we had, we had a school board member in the fourth district this year that was elected because nobody else ran against him. And I'm not going to say more, but we should not have people with nobody running against them. So, please, consider being a candidate. Talk to your friends, you know the people who are knowledgeable and active and whatever. Somebody, we need, and I think it may be an April deadline to sign up to be a candidate. Or June, maybe June.
Somewhere around June.
Maybe up to June, okay.
April for...
All right, so...
It's time for us to stop. This has been a wonderful conversation. I'm very grateful to each and every one of you who have come tonight. I hope you will all be in contact with your Board member, that you will be with us on Monday night. We will, you will find all of this information on the State of King William Library's website tomorrow. The Board of Supervisors members will have it in their email tomorrow. And again, thank you all for coming. Thank you.